If there would please rise for the anthem and remain standing for the prayer. Or for the pledge, I should say. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God my fathers, thank you for this evening and we just thank you for the sun, thank you for the dry weather and a lot of us fail to realize and fail to remember that you tell us in your word that we will have problems, we will have trouble. It's not the scripture that we want to hear, but it's the truth. But you also promise your presence, you promise that you'll be with us in the storm and we thank you for leading us through the storm this weekend. We just thank you for the individuals that you put in this community that stepped up and helped this community make its way through all the damage from Saturday night's storm and for the people who worked countless daunting hours doing not the easiest work and they did it for this community. And we thank you for that. We thank you for the people that you've placed in the various roles and in this room and in this community that helped this community be the place that people want to call home. We thank you for all your blessings, we pray for your wisdom tonight. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Jan, if you would, roll call.
Brandon Almore.
Present.
Nathan Conklin.
Present.
Tim Heiss.
Here.
Tito Farias.
Here. All right, I trust you've had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. Do you have any questions or comments? And if not, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve consent agenda as presented.
We have a first, we have a second?
A second.
They're both pointing each other. All those in favor, second five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent agenda approved. We're going to do a little bit of a change up in the agenda and we're going to skip straight to Steve who has the facade grant regarding Tony Gates.
Yep, thank you. I have family in from Montana, so I gotta go to a picnic or my mom will hang me up on my back. Facade grant for the Gates family, the antique mural work on the facade, the tuck pointing, the windows, everything they were doing is all complete. It actually came in a few hundred dollars on their budget. I think you should have that in your packet. So, Tony would be here, but he generally is working at night, so it's kind of hard for him to get here. And his wife, I never know what time she's going to get home from work from her job. So, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask, but I would be looking for you guys to go ahead and vote to have Jan issue the check for fifty percent of the cost of the project. If you look on the windowsills and the things like that I took pictures of, those were in desperate need of repair or state, they have significant amount of collapse and things occurring on what would be the south wall of the building and that's all been shored up and taken care of, so.
What was the original quote? I can't remember offhand.
It was like nineteen thousand and some change.
I thought.
It come in, but Tony said a few hundred dollars, I didn't compare the two, so.
Eighteen forty-three. Um, Jan, do you know what we approved up to last time?
Yeah, I thought we approved this.
I want to say Nate, it was around ninety-six hundred dollars was the original estimate. It's going to be a little bit less than that.
So, the way this is going to work is that we approve initially a quoted amount and then when we come back through?
Yeah, the way it's written up by ordinance is that it's presented to you guys to approve the project and then once it's completed, Monty or I have to go inspect it, take pictures, prove that the work is all been done as stated and then we'll present you guys with the invoice.
Gotcha. I think this is one of the first like start to finish projects that we've done, so.
That's kind of the way it's set up and typed out by words and that's what's happened here, so.
All again.
Yeah.
Uh, I move that we issue the funds for the facade grant and Tony Gates.
We have a first, we have a second?
A second. That was Brandon.
Jan, if you would, roll call vote.
Brandon Almore.
Yes.
Nathan Conklin.
Yes.
Heiss. Yes.
Yes.
And then before I leave, is there any other questions for me before I get out here?
I think there was a question about the pool. Mr. Merrill had the same question about why it was shut down yesterday. It was in relation to the storm, but their chlorine level.
Basically, what happened was the pool, we tested the chlorine level Sunday morning. I got a phone call a little bit after nine. It was basically too hot, the chlorine level was way too high. We could have fixed it if we could have sent, um, back up. We could have fixed it by sending water to the wastewater plant, but at the time that we had to make that decision, we were trying to keep all the water possible outweigh the wastewater plant. So, we didn't want to deliberately make our problem at the wastewater plant worse. So, we made the decision at about nine thirty to shut the pool down. We did bring the lifeguards in and they did help clean up the park so that our employees worked and they made modifications in the park and drove tree limbs and all that stuff to the street.
Gotcha.
Plus they cleaned and repaired the pool damage and things like that. So, our employees were there working, but the pool had to be closed because we couldn't get the chlorine level down without being able to backwash everything and send it, basically drain some of it out and put more clean water in the pool.
Gotcha. Thanks for the clarification because I think there were some questions and it was obviously more complicated explanation.
It was more complicated and I didn't even tell Justin, our pool manager, what the details were. I said, hey, it's, the chlorine level's too high, we can't swim and there's a multitude of reasons why we can't fix it, but I still need you guys to go work and help clean the park up, get the pool ready for today. And early this morning, I got a phone call saying, hey, everything's good at the pool, everything's been backwashed, chlorine levels are back where they need to be. And it was simply because of the power outage, we were still putting chlorine in the pool, but we couldn't do anything with it. So, it was just sitting there building for ten or twelve hours and there's nothing we can do about it.
Yeah, thank you.
It wasn't deep from the storm.
Uh, I texted Kobe earlier today, but I forgot to ask him about this, the police vehicles. When those come in, can we get one of them parked up here for that council meeting whenever it falls?
Absolutely.
And we've got two of those two vehicles.
Yeah, I don't know what that process exactly will look like because they'll come in, they'll get delivered to be up fit with all the gun racks and cages and all that stuff that have to go in them. I'm assuming they're going to go to be up fit before they get here, but maybe they come here first and then we have to deliver them to be up fit. I don't know what that exactly marches out of, but absolutely we'll get them in front of you guys as soon as they get here.
Cool.
All right. Thank you so much. Good. Enjoy.
Thank you.
All right, department reports. Now, I've got a few shout outs I've got to make publicly. On Saturday, everybody's aware, we have struggled. You can't throw a rock in any direction and not hit a business that's looking for people to hire. Everybody under the sun seems like they're trying to find employees. And our mowing crew, the contract crew that we hired was no different and because of that, the yard, the park hadn't been mowed all week because they were, they had nobody on their crew or insufficient numbers, I guess I should at least say. And so, on their day off, on the Saturday, Brad, me and Bud, or Kerry near her, and Zach were out there mowing on their day and Zach even brought his own mower and his own gas to help mow the yard and so, mow the park. And so, a lot of that, they had it looking really nice on Saturday, right before Mother Nature has delivered a one-two punch Sunday, or Saturday night. But then on Sunday, well, actually in the wee hours of the morning, I got an email from, and you were copied on as well, from Rob letting us know that the wastewater treatment plant was down because both power lines were down that feed it. And so, he was cleaning up literally stuff one could only imagine at a wastewater treatment plant and he and Brad and Dennis Schweiger all worked fervently over, trying to remember how many hours they were up.
Thirty hours.
I was going to say, it was third, I thought, it was thirty, so it was nuts. They really poured themselves into that and there's still a lot of cleanup to do, as you can imagine, at the wastewater plant from it being down, but they did phenomenal and Rob wanted to call out also James Jackson Company, Four TC, Midwestern Engineering and Cutler Hammer Companies that stepped up also on Sunday to help out. And it was just, it was literally a team effort because then I also started getting reports of people showing up at the park to help with debris and bringing in brush and so forth. I even spent a few hours mowing on Saturday and I didn't go out Sunday because I was trying to recover and my son went out even, mowed on Sunday afternoon, so that was cool. So, I just, I appreciate everybody that stepped up. Really does mean a lot and it's really, that's what it's about, being part of a community. It's just so cool. The Blightup Grant, we do have some favorable news regarding the Blightup Grant. It looks like we're getting everything that we need that they had asked for, even though it was above and beyond what we originally thought was necessary or needed. And so, we're, I think we're in good shape for the twenty-fourth, the way it looks in terms of having submitted, based on what Kent sent last night and what you delivered today. So, kudos to Monte for that.
Question?
Yes.
That's the, that's the grant we're applying for to remove the overly.
Good clarification. Five hundred thousand grant for, it's a ninety-ten.
Great.
And yeah, so keep fingers crossed, I will be able to announce twenty-fourth, so yeah, we will be submitting before we have our next council meeting. So, I should be able to let you guys know if we hit that submission date, God willing, and, and we did in our meeting with Chipo and DNR, we did get clearance that we could actually still submit after that date if necessary with a letter from me and they would give us till, I think it was August sixth or something of that nature, but it's not, or not August sixth. It was, it was, it was past June twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
So, anyway, but I don't want to go that route. When's the, when will they make a decision on that? If it's. The decision was supposed to come sometime in August, was it not? Okay. Yeah. So, yeah, we're holding fast to the June twenty-fourth submission is what we're striving for, so. And those funds would not be available technically till next year? Like the twenty-twenty-two? When you said they would be available, wouldn't be the end of this year?
They'd be available.
Oh, wow. So, I can see where we could have one or two things down, you know, ideally before fall, even for last year.
Yeah, because they start putting the clock on us as of the award dates, you know, the time that we have to get done, so.
Well, that kind of demolition can be done.
Pretty quick.
Pretty much, well, it can be done pretty much year round depending on, you know, what's sort of.
As long as there's not a bunch of sun.
Yeah, as long as you don't have real serious weather.
Yeah.
So.
So, anyway, that's it. I do have one other positive note, but I'll share that for later. So, department heads, okay, Jan, do you have anything?
No.
Um, council members, start, Brandon?
Uh, in relation to the storm, I kind of have a personal anecdote that I'd like to share and just call out the emergency services crew. So, you know, Saturday night, as we were all experiencing the storm, Jean English's tree in the front of her yard, she's my immediate neighbor to my right, a tree limb basically fell completely across Columbia Street and I'm not sure if anybody even knew about it, but it was, it was completely blocking off traffic both directions. Before I even was on the phone, there was a police officer out blocking the street because I'd seen a few cars actually kind of slide because the streetlights were out, you know, kind of slide to a stop pretty quickly until a police officer actually had their lights on and just a few minutes later, a fire truck pulled up and, you know, three firefighters, actually, I don't know who they were, I didn't see, couldn't get their faces, but in the rain, they were cutting this tree up and clearing the roadway.
Awesome.
And then today, I mean, first thing today, I mean, those, you know, tree limbs and everything that were out, the brush piles were gone. So, excellent job for the, from the emergency services group, you know, kind of coming together and kind of prioritizing what was going on and making things happen pretty quickly, so.
Awesome.
Excellent job there. And then, you know, the red ribbon day, I concur, you know, some of your comments there about that, it was just great to see, you know, so many businesses opening up in our community and, you know, it shouldn't stop there. I know Steve had made some comments about that, I think Saturday, that, you know, we need to support these businesses now that they're open, we need to patronize them, we need to, you know, think of things that, you know, instead of buying services in other communities or online or what have you, you know, what can we do to go out and participate in their journey as a, you know, new business in our community. Swim team, swim team is, season is in full swing. We actually had our first home meet June eighth and I'm pleased to report that we actually won the meet against Winchester, first time in a few years, so.
Way to go.
That's, that's great. Um, it did have, I did field some comments from an individual within the community that had some concerns about individuals riding ATVs and mopeds on city streets, younger kids, no helmets, that type of thing. Mainly in the west end of town, like beyond Chatham Street, in the Taylor, Turner, Hickory Street kind of area, down there in that kind of area. So, I don't know if we could watch for that, but kind of in relation to that, that same individual had some concerns about, you know, police presence in terms of just patrolling the area and throughout the city, especially after five o'clock. He seems to notice that that's more prevalent around that time, that, you know, he knows that, you know, the kids notice that, you know, there's, there's nobody there watching them or what have you, so.
You said around Taylor, Chatham?
Yeah.
And?
West side of town, kind of that northwest side of town.
Okay.
There.
Hickory to Division?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, kind of those smaller streets in there, Taylor and Turner.
Gotcha.
Um, a couple of other things from Randolph County Solid Waste Management, you know, the grant cycle, we granted several grants from the Farmlands Friends, they had a project that they were working on that required, you know, some funding for play mats in their playgrounds, Monroe Central, we continued to put funds towards their greenhouse, the Boy Scouts Troop Seventeen, money was provided for funding for some kayaks for a river cleanup, the YMCA here in town and in Winchester, there were some funds that partially funded a project that they were working on that should fund their, their request to get some storage facilities for their equipment that's outside, that doesn't seem to have a home. The Journey Home, there was a project that they're looking to buy used household goods, repurpose household goods to then be used for, you know, placing veterans who are previously homeless into homes that would be needed. And then obviously the three thousand dollars that we received for the tower move was part of that grant cycle. And then the other thing with that, we actually opened up, we haven't done this before, we had a motion that is opening up a commercial line grant process for this program because we had a very compelling submission of an individual, young guy, his name is Garrett Calhoun, who is, has been doing it on his own, by hand, taking tires and creating mats for cattle to put down in pasture fields.
That's awesome.
And he's looking to buy a machine to actually do that and he's making a very compelling argument that he wants to actually take the tires from Randolph County that we're paying to get rid of, to then turn around and use in his operation. So, it's, it's something that, it seems very valuable, kind of a win-win situation and creating that commercial line for grants. And we talked about in the Red Ribbon Tour on Saturday, the commercial project that the Tree Hill Farms Group is going to be using, doing with, you know, a greenhouse initiative and what have you, that, that sounds like that's could be something in the future that they could possibly, you know, utilize as that commercial grant line that is, you know, a green initiative as well, so.
That's a wonderful idea.
That's, that's all I got to say, so.
Cool. Nate? Does he want to locate Union City and we could potentially help him out with a small business loan?
You know, I don't know where he's actually located.
Is he semi jovial this time of year?
Yeah. I'm sure he's probably rural, you know, has a rural location currently, but younger guy, I think early twenties, you know, he's got an initiative out there to do this and he's been doing it by hand. He's actually employed, I think, a couple of individuals part-time, like high school kids.
Wow.
To help him out, but he's looking to really kind of turn this into more of a commercial process, yeah.
Cool.
A bigger scale.
Basically, a lot of what I was going to reiterate was how our emergency services and, and city services were fantastic and on the ball this weekend. Friday night, there was a random, the way it was described to Brian, my father and myself was on twenty-eighth, as you're leaving town, the electric lines that come in the northwest side of town right there. Everybody in that subdivision turned their AC on right around five-five-thirty because it was ninety degrees. And because they all turned it on high at that point in time, the electric lines all seized and twisted and four poles snapped.
Wow.
Straight down and fortunately, really quick, the emergency services guys had the street closed down and were redirecting traffic and the, there was eight trucks from AEP that were there. I had a buddy drive by at one-thirty in the morning and said that the trucks were still there, making sure that that division had electric, which is good that we have twenty-four-seven people near our community that are happy and ready and willing at the drop of a hat to get things fixed, so. And thank you so much for clarifying that because I was at the ballgame and this is the first I've heard the details. I was at the ballgame Saturday night, or Friday night, the Reds game, and Gina read something and it's like, oh, don't tell me another semi. That's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you. I had two or three people say, no, they're semi hitters. I'm like, no, 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 it wasn't, it wasn't a mistake and the, AEP actually said, it's not that uncommon.
Really?
When it gets really hot, when they, on older poles, because those poles haven't been addressed in years, but they just twitched just enough and I was like, I had never thought about it. Basically, it's a rubber band just twisting at the wrong time and, yeah. So, four poles have now been replaced and that's good to go.
Awesome.
Did they increase the capacity of the electric?
I don't think it was the electric line that was the problem with the capacity, it was the, the poles were old and because they twisted, the capacity level went so high at that point in time that they moved like toothpicks.
Yeah.
But I mean, it was starting blocking twenty-eight, there were semis slamming on their legs.
Yeah, I had my, I was taking my little girl out somewhere.
But it got resolved, thank you guys, guys and gals. And then Saturday, the red ribbon cutting was really fun, just to see people uptown, happened to be second Saturday, people walking around, I mean, there was what, thirty-five, forty people following around the red ribbon cutting and that was cool. That was a good event to see what our little community can do. Now, if you are in need of, let's see, coffee will be in July, Paint It Black Restored Furniture will be right over here, photography, I hope she had her baby today, but if not, get in touch with her in the next couple of weeks. Shoot, Motley Shop is going to be awesome once it's fully up and running. There's so much exciting happening downtown that everybody needs to be proud. Little Union City, it's still Little Union City, but we've got a lot of things happening here, so I'm proud to be back in the hometown.
That's awesome.
Four years next month, so.
Appreciate you sharing that. And all four of these guys for the camera, for what it's for, and folks in this room too, played a hand in this as well, not just in the decisions they've made to support this endeavor, but they physically have been involved downtown, working at various points, so that's, kudos to you guys as well, so, cool.
That's all I got.
Awesome. Tim?
Don't really have anything to add, he's covered it pretty well on the recent events here, so I'm unfortunate, but just want to thank everybody for all their hard work.
Well, and I echo that too. I'm so glad you both, Nate and Tim, or Brandon brought up the EMF, EMS too, the emergency services stepping up because that was a glaring error on my part and I bring that up because I even had a tech, or an email last night from Kobe that was sent to Brad, I think he copied on too, it was sent to Brad and it was, he, he said, hey, I am Jamie Wright, the ordinance officer, and, and Brandon, who does our mowing for uncontrolled properties, he said, we're reporting for duty at eight o'clock, tell us where you need us, you know, because they knew their, everything was, you know, in chaos, so, just people stepping up, so it's just awesome.
And add that all those guys that worked all night and all day, worked all day today to quit in time.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Somebody went.
I saw Brad first thing this morning and I was like, oh my gosh, did you get any sleep at all? Hello? With a smile on his face, what can I do for you?
Yeah.
Full disclosure, Brad did say he was going to go hit the recliner when he left at three-thirty and that's all he was doing, so.
He deserved it.
Yeah.
Cool.
Tito?
Sorry.
Monty, were you going to cover other things as far as what we discussed at Board of Works with the mowing and so forth?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, well, I didn't have too much. I was going to talk about the pool, but that was very well covered, probably better than what I was going to do. Just wanted to shoot down a rumor that I clarified, I was enjoying a concert at Artisan Crossing on Saturday evening, so that's something that happens every two weeks, right?
I think it's once a month now.
Once a month now, okay, that people can enjoy. But someone there mentioned that they, they had heard from someone who'd heard from apparently a credible source, I doubt it, but in any case, that, that the, what is that called? The soccer field area of Harder Park was sold. No, it was not. That is, I told them, you know what, that sounds outrageous because that, that's very important for our community Christmas. You know, that's a, that's a huge attraction for, for soccer. And so, I doubt it, so I contacted Chad and he very, said, no, it is completely false. That is, Harder Park is ours and I don't think we ever.
We know this.
I don't see it shrinking, it may get bigger if some of the cool things work out.
Yeah.
But this would probably be a good time to, just to mention that, that there will be, because we had a little discussion about this earlier today, there will be some work happening in the fall, I believe, you know, with some movement, some dirt, opening up space for the parking, parking area and viewing area for community Christmas, so the soccer fields are going to be rearranged and reworked and made quite a bit, the soccer fields are going to benefit quite a bit.
Right.
From this and be better.
Is there a start date, target start date, but it's in the fall though, so after September or?
It's got to be after, well, is it after the youth soccer? I don't know.
But I don't know for sure.
I'm not sure.
But it's going to be under city direction.
Under city direction.
Not private ownership for sure.
Yeah. The expansion of that area for, and then that'll create more dirt to make better level soccer fields to the south a little bit, so, so the configuration will change a little bit and it'll be better, it'll be enhanced.
Yeah, perfect, better use of our space.
Perfect. Also, I was also downtown and I enjoyed, I have my little central oil tent, so I enjoyed having more people come down and check this out. But someone asked, is there a list of the new businesses that, somewhere?
Uh, we could certainly produce one, yeah. In fact, I'll give a deal because that would be the perfect thing to do on the website, so I'll get with the.
Perfect. That's all I have, thank you.
Monty?
I was actually going to ask, does anybody know if Cuts by Escobar takes appointments for men's and women's hair?
That's a great question. I just, that's a great, I just assumed yes, but I don't know that definitively.
Okay.
So, I'll get with Steve because he could answer that.
I should have asked her on Saturday, but I wasn't sure. I've had people ask me and I'm like, I don't know.
I thought so, but yeah.
Because I didn't clarify.
The new ownership of accents on you.
Well, I assume nothing's changing because that's where my hair is cut.
Okay. You didn't get your, there's a man, right?
So, as far as that, yeah, yeah, they've always, they have been unisex up until now, so I don't, no indication of that changing.
Cool.
Monty?
Uh, yes, our mowing contractor that we've had the last three or four years at the park and cemetery, Myers Landscaping has contacted us and is just basically unable to keep up with that due to lack of help. He just can't find enough bodies to do the mowing. So, we have put out for a request for proposals to mow the park and the cemetery and do the trimming. And we got two quotes for that, one from All Brothers here in town and another one from MJ and H Lawn Care. We're presenting the board of works today. All Brothers Lawn Squad was monthly was going to be ten thousand, three sixty. All Brothers Lawn Squad was, monthly, was going to be $10,365. And MJH Lawn Care was going to be $2,900 per mowing. That way in the spring, 'cause, you know, sometimes, just as soon as they get done mowing the one end, they'd have to go back to the other end and start mowing again, so it, Board of Works felt like that All Brothers was the better quote on that. And that, for spring of the year, they may be mowing multiple, multiple times a month, and then towards the end of the year, they won't be mowing so much, so for them, it'll probably work out in the long run. But he just took what the average mowing would be, split it up into, you know, between April and October, and put that, that's the price put on it, so.
What did we used to pay per mow?
I think the other one was $17.50 for the cemetery and $7.50 for the park.
That's correct, yeah.
So that's not too far off. I mean, that's $2,500 per mow, and if you do it four times.
Is it a mowing, trimming, mowing?
This is also mowing and trimming the park as well.
Park and cemetery.
Perfect.
Because previous, they did not include trimming.
On the park.
Right.
Yeah, the park, well, didn't get trimmed.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, if you approve what the Board of Works suggested.
I have a question. Oh.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. So, we're no longer gonna have the contract with Myers, or?
No, he's just not, he's not...
Unable to do it.
And the other thing that they requested was, they'd like to be able to have a three-year commitment, which it's, I mean, you know, you can get out of that, but, and we asked about the price, and he, basically, the only contingency was if fuel prices, and we didn't write in a, and if the council wants to put something in, you know, in clarification on that, as far as fuel surcharge, but the only thing that would dictate increase in price for them and on their part is if fuel went up triple or something.
Would it make sense to let me fuel from us, since we get, with our agreement with the school? Would that make sense? Would we absorb more of a fuel price increase going that route and offering that to them versus them going out and purchasing it wherever they're getting it?
I know they have some tanks, but I don't know if they have as big a tanks as with the school.
And if we provided that fuel, that would lower the price we paid.
We could have...
At least, at least keep it at bay, keep it from escalating, if I'm understanding here.
Well, like, he's just mainly saying that the price would not increase unless you had significant fuel increase.
Monty, was that April through October, so like April 1st to October 31st? So it'll technically be seven months? Jan, do you know offhand what we paid last year in total cost?
No.
Because that's what, $70,000, be committing to, $210,000 over three years. Just sounds like a lot of money for going.
Yeah, so they only moved once, and if we, was it drought discussed? Because like in August, I know we've had some Augusts and Septembers where it's almost like gold out there.
You mow one time.
Yeah, and you might mow once in the month. Was that discussed by chance?
Yeah, yeah, that's what they talked about, 'cause basically, he will lose on the spring, but hopefully, he'll take that back in the fall, so that it all, that it works out over there, so.
I say, "It's a shame that he didn't..." Because this is the first time we're at the quotes, too. "It's a shame he wasn't willing to do the by-mowing, because that's the only...
Yeah, I would be interested to see how much we paid last year, or in previous years, because...
He thought it was, he thought it would be easier this way as far as budgeting and whatever like that.
Easier on us.
You would know how much it was, and...
And I appreciate that. I understand what he's starting to say there. My concern is that the inconsistency of the growth. I definitely hear what he's saying with the beginning of the season, you do feel like you're mowing. I'm mowing two, sometimes even three times a week in the early spring, but then, yeah, like June, and even late June, sometimes it can really wing, and then by August, there's times where I just mow certain spots in the yard, and it's really dry.
I mean, how many mows are we guaranteed? Like, you know, say, for example, like you're talking about, you know, May, where we may have, you know, three or four times it actually needs it, I mean, are they...
He'll mow it as many times as it needs it, and as many times as we tell him.
Really?
As a matter of fact, his biggest concern was that when they mowed before, that we might, we'd held them off a little bit, then it'd get too tall, and he doesn't wanna let it get too tall. He's particularly concerned about getting it too tall.
So if we got six mowings maybe in the month of April, or seven mowings a month?
They'd rather mow it more often.
Yeah.
He'd rather mow it more often than let it get out of hand and then have...
Machine, it's just that they don't...
Yeah, yeah. So he wants to keep it looking nice.
Right.
Which is huge.
Yeah.
Last year, we spent $38,000.
Wow, that's like double. Ouch. Yeah, that's a significant increase.
But that company can't sustain what our need is.
No.
So that's something to keep in mind. You don't happen to say, if it's $38,000, okay, wait, it was $38,000, I can do the math on that, hold on.
But it was cheaper last year, though, because it was $650 for mowing on one.
It's $16.50, I think, on the other.
On the other, so you've gotta add that.
$2,300?
I can print that.
That means they mowed it 16 and a half times. So if you divide that by seven months, that means that it only got mowed 2.3 times.
Monty, was that, was he facing that, was it 22 mows? It was based on 22, is what All Brothers is, based on 22 mows.
22 mows, is what they were back there.
Well, we have our entire Board of Works here. Is there anything you guys would like to elaborate regarding your thought process with? Did All Brothers, they didn't have any representation there at the meeting, did they?
Yeah.
Did the other company have representation there as well? Okay.
Where's the other company from?
In Union City.
They're from Union City, too? You're, I was trying to make it easier, and you just made it harder.
But is there anything that you guys would care to share in terms of the discussion that was had?
We questioned much as you have. This is quite a bit more money. Fact is, the guy that bid so low didn't come through.
Yeah.
We're not, the, all of us have heard complaints about the grass and the park and the cemetery, and yes, I think this is gonna cost us a little more. In the end, we decided that this, we were willing to recommend it.
Seems, he seemed much more sincere.
Well, the fact is, he did explain it, and what he loses in the spring, he makes up in the fall. Now, they figure that on average, and, you know, he's got it set up so that they can operate a business and make a profit. He's got the people to do it and the equipment to do it, and so it comes down to, yes, we'll recommend it, because, and he's local.
To compare apples to apples, All Brothers over seven months would do mowing for $70,300 and some change, though, that'll be 22 mowings if we broke it down to the average. To MJH, for them to mow it, for the $2,900 divided by the $70,000, they would technically mow it 25 times.
Three different.
Three different, yeah. So there's the apples to apples. And it could be, we get a terrible spring, and we gotta mow it three times in one week, that makes up for the whole year.
That's what they, they've averaged. I think they've been in business long enough that they average this out, and they figure we can make it at this, at this rate. I don't think it's cheap, no.
No.
So with a 32...
Everybody knows how tight I am with the dollar. I mean, we've not made any secret about that, but I don't know how we can avoid it if we're gonna get this done right, plus, he's going to trim both sides.
Trimming, yeah.
The trimming has been a...
I'm a budget perspective.
We've all heard these complaints from the citizens, that, you know, they don't like the way the cemetery and the park look, not only mowing, but the trimming. We discussed tombstones being moved, and he assured us that absolutely they would notify Dennis immediately.
Well, that's nice.
Because we know they're gonna bump a tombstone now and then. I don't care who mows that cemetery, they're gonna hit a stone now and again. The problem has been not notifying our people so they can get in there and straighten them out. He also... You know, if he told us, you know, "I assure you we'll do this," so, am I right?
Yeah, he also volunteered that his assurance, you know, that covering any damage in terms of what we've discussed. One of the things that was also, he, they really want to have a hands-on role in the management of the mowing in terms of, you know, basically calling the shots. I think that this could take some load off of Dennis, who tends to fall to, and Dennis won't have to be as hands-on, which leaves Dennis time to do the other things, and the other tasks that he needs to do, instead of babysitting whether they should mow or whether they shouldn't mow, and that they can make that judgment and do that. And then we can scrutinize, then we can do more of an overview management instead of a micromanagement, because that's, you know, one of the things that we had, when we discussed bringing back in-house, is that not only do you have to have people, but now you have to have some very active management to manage labor.
And maintenance.
And not to mention the maintenance side.
Plus, we had to buy new machines.
So, and the fact is, we don't have the machinery right now, and you're talking $11,000, $12,000 a pop.
Not without some work on the ones, because the one I drove Saturday about to beat the snot out of me. Well, that's the one Brad said, I was on that for a while, and I got off.
When you have five, six thousand hours on a mower, you're either gonna rebuild, or you're gonna replace it.
Yeah, that's another factor that nobody ever talks about with this kind of thing, is if we, with in-house peoples, that you're covering work comp and so forth on people, so if someone has a problem because of the ongoing beating from mowing, and then they incur a problem, then it's on the city. If it's with the contractor, that's his problem.
What about from a fund perspective? I mean, a $32,000 increase, I mean, what is that due to the park fund?
And the cemetery fund.
And the cemetery.
And does that put us in a bad spot there?
Do we need to do an increase?
We have to do additional appropriation now. I mean, there's money in there, you just have to do additional appropriation to cover it.
How substantial?
Do you think it would take?
Well, the...
Sorry.
The amount that...
Well, while she looks at it, to Bob's comments, I will say, I've not fielded one concern this year in terms of asking how much we've spent on the mowing, but I fielded at least eight dozen on the quality of the mowing. And that's not to diminish in any way the company that had been doing it, but it's just they were obviously undermanned.
They didn't have the people.
No. And this crew is not only manned, but to your point, they're local, they've got their sign plastered on the other end of town, so they've got a vested interest in the job that they do. And they're local, I mean, they are Union City.
People don't like to have their related stones moved or touched or...
No.
Without being put back exactly like they were.
Yeah. And that comes with a price. Yeah, it does. I mean, in terms of quality, what you're willing to pay for.
Years ago, City took on that cemetery, and now we're stuck with it, and we're gonna have to do what's necessary to maintain it.
Yeah, I had a complaint to this today on the one.
Oh, really, on a stone? Being moved by...
Very polite and very nice, but...
But still, a problem nonetheless, yeah.
Not a, not an angry complaint by any means, but definitely concerning.
Well, let's see if we can figure it out.
I'm curious, as Mr. Mayor's formal counsel time, what's your thoughts here? Put your old hat on.
Yeah, I know, well, see, that's what I was doing, when I read the double figures, like, oh. Because here's another thing, I'm sticking to a plain devil's advocate, I don't like the term, but truthfully, here we are, June 15th, is that right? Are we gonna pay them $10,000 a month in the next four or five months when they're already not mowing?
That's, that's the...
Was that discussed?
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't discussed exactly in those terms, but it was kind of, we were kind of aware of that now. Of course, the one thing he presented was, it was better that we're asking for this now as opposed of April, they probably wouldn't have been available to take on the mowing right now, but yeah, that was, that was one of the things that I thought about, was the fact that, that, and we, I suppose we could entertain, get, make a flyer at them, that, "Hey, you know, you're gonna get a little relief here. You're gonna get your relief this year without the penalty at the beginning of the year."
Yeah, yeah, you managed to miss April and May and half of June.
Yeah.
You know, could we, would they entertain a discounted rate for the remainder of this year, and then agree to the 10 and whatever?
Here's the problem, though, while we're talking about this, the grass is growing, you know?
Yes.
I don't think there's anything wrong with asking, the answer's always no from the ask.
My request...
To maybe give us a break on the rest of July, August.
My request would be to wait till the end of the year and tally up the number of times it was mowed, and then, and see how that counts out.
So no, we're paying what the contract...
Yeah, and then, then ask, you know, but have a discussion about, hey, we'll do, we like that, but we, since you're not willing to have this heavy period at the beginning, would you consider counting up the, you know, figuring this average and counting this up to the end of the year, and then if this...
And then the last bill, not pay it in full?
Not, yeah, and then have a...
Like a rebate?
Have a rebate toward, you know, at the end.
Yeah, but we're not paying, we're not paying anything for April, anything for April, and...
But that's where we have like eight mows in April.
Yeah, he's missing all the heavy ones, and so...
So we're necessarily, we might be paying $10,000 for one mowing in September, and they never did mow for us in April, May, that's my concern.
Right.
And believe it or me, I need to state the fact that I think they would do an exquisite job, and I think there's no question about that, I'm just trying to make sure we...
What we had before, they did, they did excellent work before.
Yes, yes.
I'd say that was, and we probably, I'd wish I'd have followed that this afternoon, to make that request this afternoon.
Didn't you guys say it was 22 mows? 22 is what he...
22 is, I think, was the one he figured off of.
So if we break it down, that's $3,297 and some change per mow. My, my numbers is saying, well, that's actually $300 more than the other person, like what Jan just said, but I see the benefit next year and the year after. Can we ask? Can we just pay the $32.97 per mow for the rest of this year? Or is that gonna bite us in the tail?
I don't know, we couldn't. Bob, did you say, I don't think there's any reason we couldn't, couldn't think, because when we talked to you this afternoon?
Paid the average of 32, paid the average of 3200 and some per mow this year, and then start with the 10 per month next year?
We didn't ask, even.
This is gonna be the wettest summer in the history of...
Well, as far as this year goes, I mean, it's, it won't be as bad this year as it can be next year, because this year, we haven't paid for two and a half months, April, May, and half of June. So it's $30,000 more, and it's $25,000 not... So it's thirty thousand more and it's twenty-five thousand not paying this year, it's probably like five thousand more for this year.
Okay.
Next year would be this.
Yeah.
And it's not, I mean, our cemetery budget is pretty tight. There's not a lot of room there. But you do have cemetery non-reverbing.
And not to take, we need to button this up because we can get moving, but do we need to raise cemetery fees? Are fees in line? Have we checked to see how in line they are?
We've raised them.
We've raised them, but I mean
Do we need to raise them again? Because in all fairness, this is what this is works. We shouldn't, the taxpayer shouldn't incur all this cost. It should be passed on to the customer. That's what happens to us, does it not? So, I mean, if somebody needs something out their cemetery, I wonder if those costs should be raised to help offset the increase in cost for maintenance so that their plots of their loved ones are taken care of to the degree that they would like them to be taken care of. That seems logical.
Yeah.
And now, I mean, am I off here?
Well, I'm actually going to ask for some clarification because I'm, I've never looked at this personally. Is, my understanding is, is when you go buy a lot, a plot out there at the cemetery, you pay X dollars right now, but then there's no monthly maintenance, there's no annual maintenance, it's just one time, for as long as that cemetery is in existence, has to be taken care of.
Yeah, we haven't had a raise for what, ten, five years, six years in, in cost and
I'd say at least.
It's been several years since there was, and it was a very modest, because I remember calling cemeteries and getting what they were charging.
I think that was our answer to a degree. If we, if, that's what it boils down to, if we're going to take care of it to the degree that's expected by the general public, then that cost needs to be relayed to the people who basically are needing this to be taken care of.
Yeah.
Not that it's buried in my backyard.
What's that I'm talking?
I was talking to my wife, I said, can you just bury me in the backyard? So, well
This is a cremation.
Do I have a motion, if I understand the consensus or the way that your conversation is going, do I have a motion to make the pitch to for them to mow the per mowing rate for the remainder of this year that you figured, considering they missed the heavy months? And then we would assume the ten thousand per month contract starting March of next year or April, whenever the growing season starts?
Yeah.
I'll be honest, I don't want to offend them, but I also don't want us to have to overpay.
I think, well, that's
We could go with three years, starting next year as the first year, then unless somebody doesn't think that's a good idea.
Well, that's fine. I just, the only thing, I just want to make sure that we can get, if, we need to, I feel like we need to authorize the mayor to make that negotiation and also be able to unilaterally make a decision to accept what he needs, what he feels is appropriate to accept so that we get this done, because if we
Before we
We can't go through the two weeks of
So we get boards out there. Yeah, we can't, we need to get the, we need to get this expedited so that we have somebody mowing. And that's, they're able to take up right now. You know, they need to mow tomorrow, they'll start tomorrow, but, so we need to, we probably need to give Chad the authorization.
I was thinking if the contract is for three years starting now, it's June to June or June to whatever, it's going to balance out anyway, right?
Well, if you look at it that
Not if they, at the end of the renewal, they may jump at three grand in the middle of that summer when we're right at the cost savings break even point. But that would be the end of the contract. Yes.
Well, that's true. I mean, did we get clarification? Does the contract run when it starts, twelve months from then and then renews next June? Probably didn't, did we?
No, we, we talked about it being a program for June, then the rest of this, this year, and then starting in, I thought it was March, but
It is March, because he won't mow in March if he has to.
Okay.
But there's no charge.
Oh, but there's no charge in March?
Right.
He'll mow in November if he has to and there's no charge.
It starts
Well, he can't mow in November because I'm streaming lights in November. Except maybe certain spots.
Yeah, you can have a little bit.
Yeah. So, we actually could do some mulching out there to leave, that would
So
Honestly, I, I'm going to put it in form of motion. I move that we approve, well, I guess first question. Board of Works did say a hundred percent, you guys are good with All Brothers?
Yes, we did. We voted to recommend.
We voted to recommend.
As counsel, I've moved that we accept Board of Works' All Brothers proposal of ten thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars per month to be negotiated and prorated, but for them to start immediately, basically treat us fair this year.
Cool.
But I want to see all that in the minutes next time, Jen.
We have a first with
Exactly what you said.
We have a first and we have a second.
How was that?
Brandon Almore?
Yes.
Nathan Conklin?
Yes.
Tim Hines?
Yes.
Peter Freya?
Yes.
All right. Did I ask for anything?
It's all good. No, it needs, it needs done. It needs to look good. It's our showpiece, it is what it is.
No, thanks.
All good. Our newest student
One pause, one pause. While we're on that topic, any headway with new equipment? I know Steve was supposed to talk to them last week.
Oh, the park equipment?
Or is that tomorrow?
Yeah, I don't, I gotta follow up with him. I don't think that conversation's been had yet. I know what you're talking about.
Next council meeting, hopefully we've
Yeah, well, some different grants and appliances and all. And I've got Monty working on something with DNR too in terms of tree replacement. Because we need to get, they've got money available for us and we're losing trees rapidly in the park.
Ditching too? Is ditching getting on that agenda?
Yeah, ditching part of the discussion because DNR wants to be a part of that discussion, so.
Of course.
Our newest student representative is
This is what they have to look forward to.
Anything that you care to report, you want me to just wait till, you just want to go into whole business and
Well, yeah, I don't really have, I met with Nathan on our codes. It's just a couple that we are taking care of. It's just pulling together the timeframe, making the timeframe shorter for notices. And I thought that I would have it done for tonight and obviously I
We'll be able to put on at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we can put it on at the next meeting. And as far as the condemnations, I mean, we're moving right along. We've, we've got some dates coming up. I will email those dates to you. And then if you want to get them to
And we did, we did get one level, which was wonderful. And then the other one, we were pushing for emergency condemnation. Do we get any
Elm Street with raccoons?
Yes. Do, what?
We need to get an emergency.
Yes, what power do we have if we've got something that is just in dire shape?
Well, if it's an emergency, we can, we can go ahead, because we've done that before, Monty.
Through Board of Works, yeah.
Yeah, through the Board of Works, we, because we had one that would have burned.
Yeah.
And it was an immediate health danger, you know, hazard. And we were able just to go in and through the Board of Works, go ahead and tear it down. Does this raise to that level? I mean, is it
I was told by a neighbor, it looks like there's a bobcat or a raccoon the size of a bobcat living in that house.
Oh, but what in my report was multiple raccoons
Okay.
Are on site. And it's, it's just, it's invested.
It scares a couple of the neighbors to go out at night.
Yeah.
That was the gentleman, the gentleman was here three councils.
I mean, that sounds to me like
Yeah, I'm sorry, they're asking, in all fairness to the Board of Works, where is, I can't remember this property, but it was, was it Elm?
Elm Street. But Elm's the real short street between High and
Yeah, you can call it Short Elm.
Um, it's on the south side of the road halfway down. If you drive by, you'll know exactly which one.
Well, there's one on Oak Street that's full of raccoons too. Steve and I looked at it months ago.
Which one, the double or the one at corner of Sycamore and Oak? Because that's a double
I found an eight eleven East Elm?
Yes, that's it, that's it, that's it.
Yeah.
So, but the Board of Works, they've already had their meeting today and it has to be posted. If they have to meet, have a special meeting, it has to be posted, doesn't it, for public notice? So the soonest they could meet would be
Two weeks?
Well
No, I mean, you have to have forty-eight hour notice, correct? Is it forty-eight hours, Jen? Sorry.
Special meeting from Board of Works.
Yeah, you mean if you're going to post a notice, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Pause, let's make this simpler. What does the Board of Works need to say? Can't we say it? We're counsel, we're right here.
It's the ordinance says
The ordinance, yeah. So according to our own ordinance, we've got to follow that unfortunately.
Frank, you put that down, we need to get that addressed.
So could we call, we Well, yeah.
But you're going to have
We got to post it. Could, could, could you guys have a special meeting Thursday?
I'm, I'm no problem. I'm
Susan, are you Would you both be available for a special, you said you would? Susan, would you be in town Thursday, early? You're going to head out, aren't you? Eight, eight o'clock?
Huh?
I forgot to retire.
Nine o'clock?
Is nine o'clock work?
Nine o'clock. All right, you need me to post?
Yes, please post that, because then I will get, Monty, if you would, get with, I think Logan Ray already is already aware. If we need to get another couple too, but see when they could be mobilized. Because if we get the affirmation from you guys on Thursday morning for emergency condemnation, then we will move immediately for demolition.
I can tell you that eight eleven East Elm, if that is the, if that is the same house we're talking about, that is, I have filed that in the court. But the issue there is the owners are
Not accountable.
Can't find them.
Yeah, I know.
Can't find them.
Yeah.
And they're, I know they're divorced. But, and, and the man, the ex-husband, he's had several addresses, none of which are correct is the problem. So, I mean, it's like they've just totally left.
Don't you do that by publication then?
Yeah. And then That's what you have to do. Yeah.
And then once the, the cost of the demolition, would that not be, would that be a lien on their taxes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Only if they're in Indiana though, correct?
Well, the lien is hung on the property taxes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which is still under their names.
Is that current?
The property taxes? I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I haven't, I mean, I've been shocked.
I'm sure they're not, but I don't know for certain.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Bob, you started asking questions about the one, I think you're, I know which one you're talking about, across from the Oak Street lots
Yeah.
On the corner. That is, was turned over to the city from
We have a tax certificate.
Yeah, we're getting a tax certificate on it. It is, it is basically in process to get resolved.
And it can be torn down now.
Not yet, but it will be.
I mean, after
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've heard too many complaints.
That's part of the content, or that's part of the blight.
No, I think it's further down.
Yeah, it's Oak and Second.
Nine fourteen most of
Yeah, that sounds right.
Okay. It's on a corner, isn't it?
I think it's on the corner.
It is on the corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, white house.
Full of raccoons and It's a kind of a menagerie.
The owner actually mailed me a key over a year ago. I went through it because we talked about potentially trying to rehab it.
Yeah.
And what you can't see is there's a ten by ten missing hole in the roof, right in the center of the house. It's on the backside. Like the back part, there's a big hole. You could almost fly a kite out of it and just hang it upstairs.
Inside the house?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
There's no way to repair it, because that's what gave me the inspiration to do the, the auction list, so.
Okay. Anything else, Brian?
No.
Well, appreciate it. So, moving down the whole business, the rail tower move, the good news is we finally officially received state, and I've got the letter in hand, we've received the state approval for the move of the rail tower, so July twenty-seventh, still waiting a word of official time from Wolf Movers, which is critical because we have the governor's office coming in. Lieutenant Governor will be coming in that day and a representative of the governor himself will be coming in as well for the move. So that's a big day that we'll be working on promoting. And
That's a Tuesday?
Yes, that's a Tuesday unfortunately. That's, that's the day it worked best for Wolf and so, so we'll still drum it up the best we can and
What's the date on that?
July twenty-seventh. And then the good thing is, we're using that too. I've been reaching out to some businesses too, letting them know because it's, it's a reason to, for them to do everything they can to spruce up their business, whatever they want to do. And same thing goes for house owners. Because the nice thing is, we get the town spick and span for July twenty-seventh, we're all set for State Line Heritage Days, so that's a week later. So we'll be set. Small business loans and revolving loan program.
I think that's a Steve's
Yeah.
We started talking about it, but as a counsel, we haven't decided if we want to do anything, if we're still open to talking about the small business loans.
And Monty made a great point too, that ARC funds very well would, most likely qualify for this.
It would, yeah.
Any update from ARC, what we can use it for, what we can't use it for?
Yeah.
How much greater?
What's today's version, Monty?
It's water sewer infrastructure, it, business support, which is your revolving loan. And for us to, there's a fairly complex formula where we could, if we can show how much we've, revenue we've lost for, because of COVID, da, 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 we can do that. But that's just about it.
Okay.
We, on the infrastructure, we don't have any clarity yet on like new development, if that's feasible yet.
Can't really be used for that.
Do we get word from Heidi or from
Baker Tilly.
Baker Tilly.
So, because we were looking at trying to use it for, well, to see if we could use it for filters down at the water plant and they didn't think that that would apply.
Really?
It has to be to improve water quality and
Isn't that the definition of a filter?
Yeah. The engineering company that we were talking to didn't think that they could make that fly, so.
Well, we surely would be able to use it for lead line replacement.
Absolutely, yes.
Which is, which is a big deal for what we need to be doing.
And we're looking to apply to SRF, there's a hundred million in SRF for water.
But that's frustrating, then. If we get those ponds, then we still are back to square one with the ARC funds sitting there and no specific
Except we can use those for match for the SRF funding, so.
How about for ditching for the park? Does that qualify?
I don't think so, although
You left, but you must not have drove through in the last day or two. There's ponds you can go swimming in.
Although we may be able to do that with SRF funds, so I'll bounce that one off of them there, because stormwater is also
And we've got, can we use it for wastewater infrastructure, underground infrastructure?
Yeah, probably.
Can we use it to repay some of the loan we just took out for the wastewater treatment?
No.
That'd be too good.
Well, we will, yeah, let's table small business loans and revolving loan program and get a little bit more insight on
I think OAKR has a program where they'll help you set up a revolving loan.
Yeah, I thought we left it last week with, or two weeks ago, we were going to look at an approach with Baker Tilly to draw up a program of some sort, potentially.
Do we have anything from
No, I mean, no doubt they could.
I'm just looking at the notes, the minutes from last meeting and that's what we had specifically.
I think if OAKR will do it, they'll, they'll probably do it for free, so.
Okay. Well, let's go through, and we warned out, we've communicated regularly with OAKR over the last two weeks. So they were part of the rail tower approval. New business, the policy change regarding Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh eight, which is the employee handbook, and this is on the first reading. So
Is there a reason this came up?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jen.
Okay. This is really the same thing that we, nothing's really changed except for the, it goes from, it's always been confusing. So this just spells out exactly what they get from the first time they're hired to it's always been confusing, so this just spells out exactly what they get from the first time they're hired till their, the date of their, when they're hired till their first year anniversary. So it just clarifies it. That's all it's doing. But it was, it was really vague before because it goes from, uh, when they're hired at first to your anniversary date and then it switches to January one to January one after their second year anniversary.
Is, is it actually increasing in the, uh?
I thought we had fifteen days.
No, it doesn't increase anytime. And you thought we had fifteen days?
Yeah.
You do after you, uh.
Yeah, no, but I thought fifteen was the highest we could get and this says seventeen.
It is, but then, and then in addition to that, clarifying it, there is, yeah, there's fifth, there's one added when you, uh, reached your fifteenth year anniversary and then there's another one added after your twentieth year anniversary. So you're right.
One day, not one day.
I've not been employed for twenty years. I don't know what common practice is.
That's actually, well, we were, we had a discussion with the HR, Kirsten, not Kirsten.
Kristen.
Kristen. What's her last name? Dush?
Dush.
Dush. Uh, we are under manned compared to other communities our size or even surrounding communities in terms of vacation, what we offer based on tenure and so forth. And she goes, we're basically, we're two days under what neighborhood communities offer. And so that puts us more in line from an HR perspective.
Is that like after the ten years or where are we two days under? I was like, I run HR for Equus and we max out at th- at fifteen days. So seeing this is making me go, wait, we just did this.
Yeah.
The reasoning behind it.
Our reasoning, well, our vacation policy or our holiday policy is actually two days under, is it not?
Yeah, that's what you said. The holiday policy, not necessarily.
Yeah, the holiday policy is two days. So we offer two less holidays compared to most folks. So this is our compromise instead of getting everybody off. It's more of a way of rewarding folks that have been with us for an extended period of time. Cause if you do the two day additional holidays, then everybody's getting.
One of the things that's always a problem is emergency services really hits you hard on that. The municipal services, you can shut, those basically shut down.
Right.
On those holidays.
EMS, you're scrambling.
Fire EMS are twenty-four seven.
Yeah, they're scrambling to find folks.
Three sixty-five and so there's.
So this was the compromise to that.
Gets expensive, yeah.
And this is just a question for, I don't know who would have asked this question. When we say it has one day, is that eight hours? Is that ten hours? Is that seven and a half hours?
Is it twenty-four hours for an emergency services visual?
It's an eight hour day, but there is a conversion for emergency services that we do internally, so.
Okay.
I, it doesn't, um, do you really want, do you really want me to explain it to you right now?
Right now? No. At some point, yes.
If you wanna come, I, I will explain.
My, my question that I was only going to suggest was, instead of having it complicated and say days, what if we converted it to hours and it's total PTO, sick time, vacation, all rolled into one, and then it simplifies it?
Let's talk about this.
Does that complicate it more it sounds like?
No, no, literally. So sick, vacation, you roll it all into one. I've had two employers do this and it worked out fantastic. Because there was people that were taking sick time while they maxed out their sick. They couldn't take sick time anymore, but they were still taking vacations. Well, if you rolled them all into one, one way or the other, it meets Indiana's requirement, because I just did this with RHR. And I'm curious, how many sick days do our people get?
It's, um, half a day per month they get, so six days per year.
So technically, if you've been here twenty years, you could get twenty-three days off in a month?
A year?
Yeah, gee, well, yeah, but, yeah, a year, year or month. Potentially take almost the whole month of December off.
If you're taking all your sick days.
Sick and vacation.
You would if you rolled them all together, you would then.
You'd, you'd have twenty-three days.
But if you keep them separate.
Take your sick time.
If, if you're gonna do that, you wanna, wanna redo this.
Yeah.
Because it's not gonna be like, you know, because you're not gonna want that to happen. You're gonna take away some time by doing that, I would imagine. I'm just.
I feel like this is a lot of time off. No offense to our people, I greatly appreciate them, but this is, this is a lot of time off from any company I've ever seen.
The rest of the month.
Do what?
They don't get any more the rest of the year. They get those twenty-three days all at once. They have no more days off the rest of the year. Get to go whole year.
You're saying fifteen days?
No, they don't, cause it starts over just January first if they took all of December.
Oh, they're gonna take off in December? Wow.
You're saying fifteen days is more than any place you've ever seen?
Fifteen days plus the six, yes. If, if you just look at that, you're twenty-one days.
It depends on.
But you don't have fifteen days unless you've been here ten years and, uh, you also don't take the sick usually unless you're sick.
The older generation, the younger generation.
We do have some.
I had these people that took it off every time.
Yeah, we do.
I'm just trying to make sure we're spending our tax dollars the best.
And that's funny, why don't we revisit that? That's why we move this way, cause if we do other communities, then we just give everybody two extra holidays and then you're paying a lot more days off. See what I'm saying?
I hear what you're saying, but I'm saying seventeen days is a lot and fifteen days is a lot with six days, six sick days.
That's what it's been though in terms of the.
I wasn't here before that. I would argue then too.
I just, cause the one concern I would have is we're not the most, you gotta remember, it's about, being HR, you appreciate, it's a bouncing act. And we've also got a, a compensation issue with surrounding communities.
But the school, I mean, the, uh, the city's insurance is superior to anybody you're gonna compare it to.
Yeah, which, which our insurance, my insurance amounts to, what, they, they equate that to be maybe a seven thousand dollar increase or, or consideration?
A year?
Yeah, it, for, for an individual.
Oh, well, yours is.
We can table this, I think, and move on then, cause.
I would like to know more data around, is this really accurate, reasonable and beneficial? I like our guys and I like that they all work. This is, I mean, anybody in, in the audience, if you have experience with what your standard work or work we, or vacation time on an annual basis was, I would happy to hear some input.
I would say it's not as much as I get.
It's not as much as you get.
Or, I get more.
You get more, okay.
I, I got more in the federal government. I got more in the army.
My, my suggestion at this point, cause I can't input anything, cause I don't get any.
I know.
You don't get it.
But, uh, is that we, we consider this, this as presented and then, then maybe take a study of this and if Nathan'd like to look into it further and work with some scenarios that we think about something for, you know, new, you know, like next, you know, but starting at a later date like next year, you know, use a calendar year or something.
Question for you, Mr. Mayor, since you are technically part-time mayor and you have a full-time job, do you have more days than this or less? You don't have to answer a number.
I'm not aware of vacation time that I have to balance with my mayor's job.
No, no, not mayor, not mayor. Your, your full-time gig.
Oh, my full-time? Uh, I've.
You don't have to tell a number, just more or less the same?
Yeah, more, more.
Okay, okay.
More for quite some time.
Okay.
You know, I, it might miss us something though, it's just one day we're adding though to correct, or the considerations.
The only thing we are doing right now is, it's clarifying it. We're adding one day after you've been here fifteen years and we're adding another day after being here twenty years or twen- yeah, twenty years. So we're not, we're not changing a lot. So if you have a problem with what's already here, then, you know,
That's gonna be a whole.
Then you, you need to take a deeper look at it, but right now the only change is adding one day after you've been here fifteen years and adding another day after you've been here twenty years.
Yeah, and I can't say, based on experience, just companies I've been with before, it's, it's unmitigated disaster when you go backwards in people's benefits.
And that's why I don't wanna go backwards, but I also don't wanna go forwards and find out more above the industry.
Yeah, and that, well, and that's why we got to this point, because we're two days short in what we offer in holidays to everybody.
In comparison, are we other municipalities or other jobs?
According to, according to Kirsten, other, Kristen, I've got a Kirsten horse from my other company. According to Kristen, we're two days short compared to, she just said other communities or she, did she elaborate in terms of?
I believe it's municipalities.
She does a lot of municipalities.
Okay. So, I, we could get details from her in terms of what communities those are, the, what, what that entails, you know, is, are we talking southern Indiana or are we talking actually areas around those? To keep it apples to apples.
Can we go with this and then, uh, look into it a little more deeply? Does, you know, if you wanna expand the, have we?
Honestly, I'm just not gonna move anything on this. You guys do whatever you wanna do.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you guys, if somebody wants to make a motion.
I think we're not tied. I mean, we don't have, it's not a super time sensitive thing at this point, so.
No.
We can table this.
Yeah, that's fine.
Get a little more clarification.
Absolutely.
It's not, not gonna be, change anybody right, right this moment.
Yeah, no.
And we're not talking about a week or anything like that that's gonna make it in terms of a vacation. We're not adding a week of vacation where it's gonna change somebody's plans entirely.
Not at all, not at all. So the last thing then on our new business is the closing of the alley behind the backstage.
We are still waiting on the petition for that.
So we do not have what we need.
Anderson Partners. No, we don't have what we need yet.
So there's nothing to, nothing to address there yet then.
But we're here for that cause.
Okay. Please speak, please stand and state your name and address.
Okay, I'm dressed neither. We at, uh, at two two six North Plum Street.
Okay.
That's a fire station.
Yes.
Okay. We've had some problems with the working back there and coming over our property, this type of thing to full time. And we've asked and repeated to stay off the property, they won't do it. We've had to park the vehicles right in our yard. And, uh, the backstage, it seemed to me that you hadn't quite made your mind up on it. It was, we've got the letters showing, uh, what they were supposed to cut at and what we've given to us in it. And they've gone ahead and already jumped the gun and cut right through that, uh, back area, removed the street and cut clear under our, our old property line, three, four feet into our yard.
Removed it. Now that area back there, we're speaking of.
We'll move French, sorry. Go ahead.
I talked to the guys from Crest Line up there and he said, they're bad. They shouldn't have done that.
Okay.
And that, that they were gonna have to put it back.
Okay.
So.
So they are gonna.
At least that's, that's what he told us.
Okay, so we need to keep it all in that make there, sure.
We asked them about it and if asked for it in writing, if they'd replace it, we'd do our property and they wouldn't do it, give us anything. But, uh, the original gentleman we spoke with, uh, that was out there, he said, well, we made a mistake when they laid this out and cut it and we're gonna replace it. Then he's been removed from the job and other men have come in there now, uh, Austin. And he's like, well, I don't think so, not till, not unless we were told we have to. We're just, you know, unless we're forced to do it, we're not gonna do it, in other words.
So the gentleman that stepped in now says they're not going to replace that.
He won't say that, he won't say that we, they will do it.
Okay.
And that, his name's Austin?
Austin.
In fact, we had a letter come back from them and saying, well, we're not gonna do anything unless, uh, we hear something from the council over here on it.
I think we can.
Do you have a copy of that letter?
Try it.
I have a copy.
We haven't vacated it, so.
So we can, yeah, we can force that issue.
Is this the one? Well, I want the one we just got, but you don't have.
Oh, I don't, it's an email. It's an email.
Can you bring a copy up to Monty so you have it for your records?
Yeah, I think.
I can do that.
I think we can make that part of the, that they, that they replace that.
We want this project to go through and we were completely in agreement with the original paperwork and everything they sent us of what they were gonna do.
Okay.
But, uh, they have cut clear back to our, how to get room to get my truck in and out of my own driveway.
Oh, mercy.
And plus, well.
This is twenty-three foot truck.
Our half of the alley, so they weren't, they, according to their letter, um, the als- the, um, it's part of the backstage law, property would be removed and the asphalt, the other ass- half of the alley would become an extension of your property, would remain intact. But they've already cut some out.
Boy, some of that, we cut asphalt out.
Oh, they've cut on our half of the property.
They'll have to.
And come clear into our own property, three feet beyond our old property line.
Oh, mercy. Okay.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, do you?
In fact, excuse me, well, the people, yeah, we want to, no, one, again, they're sure they're bad and that's just two ways about it.
If you could, uh, make copies of that from Monty?
Clarification of the word line is.
Not that one, that's what, that's what I did.
I walked back there, I saw him.
Just, that's going back, um, your old line, our old property line is here.
The corner net will do.
And then cut clear back to there.
If you can get copies for Monty, he'll have a conversation with him. It should get fixed, is what it sounds like.
They have a copy here here.
Well, since we have.
He wants the letters.
Yeah.
Yeah, emailed letters, you said?
Yeah, I have the letter. What it's saying, it just says they weren't gonna really go forward with anything or say anything.
And it depends what happens at the hearing today and I guess, I guess, I don't know, what's, what's the problem with the issue?
Well, they have to file, they have to file with us a petition before we can.
Accept.
Even, even consider doing it and, and we still haven't got that in front of us.
Oh, and yet they've already.
It should have, yeah.
And they've already started.
Of course, again, the guy I talked to said, yeah, we shouldn't have done that, you know.
Now, who did you talk to?
Well, it was the guy apparently before this guy.
Right. Matthew, is it Matthew?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, and.
Same one you did, so.
Right, right, but the new guy.
But, yeah, we've got some, we can.
But we're the boss. We have leverage on this, cause we haven't vacated it, so.
Yeah, that's still our alley.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can.
But it hasn't been vacated, what's already gone, it's getting hard to get it down my driveway now.
Right.
I can't get to the back driveway, parts of it.
Yeah.
And, uh, I've got, if, if they cut in like they're doing it now, I, I have to clone, in order to get my truck back to the driveway, this twenty-three foot, you gotta drive in like this and then back in that way. Well, when I drive in this way, I'm on my own property. But they've cut it off on an angle across it where I, I'd be out in the, in the grasslands where they put the grass in.
Yeah.
And so it looks like they're slowly encroaching further and further and further onto the property as they're going here.
Yeah, if you would, please go ahead and send the emails, forward those emails or print them and, and get them to Monty as well as the picture that you have there and then we'll, we'll address that with them.
Well, can we email it to you?
Sure.
No, I'll take it over. I mean, like it's a whole two blocks away, you know?
Oh, is it? I don't know.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Apologize.
Appreciate that.
We'll get it straightened out.
Um, any other visitors wishing to address the council? If not, the date of the next council meeting will be Monday, June twenty-eighth at six PM and the board of works meeting will be this Thursday at nine PM.
So June twenty.
Yeah, yeah.
Nine AM, nine AM.
Nine AM.
Hold on, we're getting close to Bob's bedtime.
I would entertain a motion for adjournment. We're first and I think we've got a second.
I said, I said.
All those favors signify, it's, uh, Tito moved in ten seconds. All those papers signify by saying aye?
Aye.